All right. Good afternoon. I call to order this special meeting of the Carabel City Commission. It's Thursday, November 21st, 2019, 3:00 PM. We're at Carabel City Hall. I will ask Commissioner Cal Allen to please say the prayer and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, so if you would all stand.
My God, Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we could come together in a community like this and discuss those things that deal with welfare and health and justice for all of our citizens. We ask you to be with us, that we might deal wisely with those things that come before us, that our city might continue to develop and grow in prosperity and in safety. We ask to get in your son's name on the.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the public, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just ask if anyone comes to the podium to speak, and the commissioners and the attorney, everybody, please speak into the microphones and turn your cell phones off or down. All right. We have this afternoon one item on our special meeting and its discussion and possible action concerning ordinance 199, and ordinance 199 is Carabel's animal control ordinance. We have some special guests here that were asked to come. We have Mr. Ron Nally, the city manager of Appalachia Cola, and Chief Barnes, the chief of the Appalachia Cola Police Department, of course, Chief Hunnings from the Carabel Police Department is with us as well, and I appreciate them coming over today. We did invite three or four times Mr. Michael Morongo, the county coordinator, and asked him to please invite Fonda Davis, the supervisor of the county animal control, county animal authority, and we haven't heard back. So I would suggest and propose that we go ahead and discuss shortly some items that regard both of the city police departments and the city, both city budgets, because the outcome of some of these items could have a need to change or revise the ordinance that we'll be reviewing later in the meeting. So first thing we'll go ahead and discuss is that we all know that the county has asked for the cities to provide $7,000 a year to, or two actually words are from Mr. Morongo, to continue to patrol and respond to city calls, and Mr. Morongo told me on the phone that that would be the same standard or same level of service that we've received in the past. But to continue to patrol, that's kind of, I'm getting the impression, and I would like to ask the county, if this fee isn't paid each year, or is the county no longer going to patrol for us, or are they going to discontinue our animal control services? Mr. Nally did negotiate for both cities this first year to pay $3,500 so that we all could tear up to $7,000. Then another part of it is that they want us to sign a memorandum of understanding that will include language that a city police officer will respond with the animal control officer to each animal complaint. And since, now this email was written on August 22nd, 2019, to Courtney and Mr. Nally, and since then, it seems like there's been more wording where they want the officers, the law enforcement officers, to respond first and then contact animal control somehow to let animal control know that they need to come and say capture an animal that's at large or whatever. So we just want to understand from the police departments how this will be, how they'll be able to manage this, will they be able to manage this, will respond to the calls first, or with every call, each complaint called, will they be able to do that? And do these dispatches, do they come from the sheriff department? Is that how that works?
Yes, Sheriff's Department dispatches them.
And...
Sometimes people call as animal control themselves, but...
Okay, they call straight on to animal control.
Yes, they do.
So, I mean, do you, should, do you all think the, I'm addressing the two chiefs, do you think that we need to go to the county and ask them exactly what they're expecting so that, you know, we can, we can understand how, what, how we move forward with this memorandum of understanding? Do you have suggestions, Mr. Hartman, how we might move forward?
In our prior meeting, when we discussed this, you know, the observation we made, I think I may have made it, but I certainly would defer to the chiefs, is that the potential, you know, extra volume of calls that the police, I think we heard from some of the law enforcement folks, that said, you know, my officers are tied up dealing with chickens in somebody's yard, and something bad happens, you know, with what typically domestic situation or whatever else, that it is not the best use of their resources and time, of their officers. And, but that's, and I say this, I think we have to improve law enforcement, but that was my opinion, but that doesn't make it so. If the chiefs disagree, they think that they have the manpower and time to be responding to every animal control call, that would seem, it just, I have my own opinion on it, that doesn't make, I don't have the background they have in operations.
And we don't know really what is expected of the police officers when they, when they arrive there, you know? And I know our police department doesn't have the equipment or the facilities to capture an animal, and then if they end up capturing it wrong, they put themselves under the public scrutiny of inhumane treatment or, you know, something along those terms.
The way the county termed it most recently was that a law enforcement officer would respond and make sure there's not a human-animal interaction, is what they were talking about. If an animal's attacking, you know, a person, that's sort of new, and I mean, obviously that would be something that obviously we would want law enforcement to come and, you know, probably shoot the dog, if that's the situation. Where he would, where maybe the animal control officer, that might be more than he could handle, I don't know. The animal control officer's not armed, is he?
No.
So if it was that sort of situation, then obviously someone armed would be helpful. But again, having our officers respond and wait there while an animal control officer might have to come from the other end of the county to respond, that doesn't seem very efficient.
Mayor, do we, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but the county's attorney, were they working on an MOU to present to us on this subject? Present to the two cities? Maybe Mr. Mantonelli knows.
Yeah, I have not, I don't believe that I talked to Michael Schuler, that one was in progress, I don't. I mean, it's obvious they want one.
They've written that in two minutes.
Well, I have heard the same subject at attending county meetings, and what I'm seeing and hearing at this point is we still have, Mayor, still have a lot of unanswered questions, and I know it's, that you've made efforts to have county officials here today. Inside of, or in view of that and the subject that we have, it seems that we have a lot of unanswered questions.
That we do.
We may need to table this subject today and have, and find a date and time for a workshop to have the county officials here with us. I regret that Manager Nally's come over here to...
I know it.
And I would like to hear some of what he has to say, and maybe you have questions for him, but not to table at this point, but let's have some discussion, but we also have two commissioners missing today.
That's right.
And I would like to have them on it as well.
We might, it might end up that the two administrators have to, and the chiefs have to meet with Michael, you know, they may have to schedule something like that even, and meet themselves and come back and report to...
To get answers to these questions.
Yes, because here's a simple question that we have for our ordinance that we're going to review today. We want to include in there the price of the vaccination, the rabies vaccination, which is done by the county. We don't know what that is, so, I mean, that is something very simple that we cannot put in our ordinance, and we don't, you know, we thought we might be able to get that answer today, but we can't. So maybe it might be best for this group of four here to try to schedule a meeting with Mr. Morongo to get some answers. The chief has some good information that he has received from the county financial officer. Would you report that to Chief Hunnings? Or give it to Courtney, let Courtney report?
I'll let Courtney do it.
Okay.
Speak up.
He does, but he's a kid.
I don't know important.
Said that the total animal control budget for Franklin County for the year 1920 is $174,082. So they're saying that out of, out of their budget, that Carabel is paying $9,696.
And the city budget?
She has, the city of Appalachia pays $13,648.
And then they've won an additional $7,000 from each city. And then there's a page there that shows, has the dispatched animal calls to Carabel.
He said there were 19 calls from the first of the year until now.
So basically, in 10 and a half months, we've had 19 calls. So just under one call a month. Yes, sir, Mr. Magnum.
Well, I think some of that is that the public does not understand, and I'm one of the public, exactly what the role of the animal control officer is. If you call the animal control officer and there's a problem, and the problem doesn't get resolved, then what's the recourse to the citizen? And I understand that, and I've heard repeatedly, that this is just a system where only complaints are responded to, but do animal control officers do any patrolling? If the police were out on patrol or in their day-to-day work, and they see a group of five dogs running around loose, is that responded to? I mean, what's, how is the enforcement handled for animal control complaints? And perhaps the low number of calls, the animal control, is that people are not getting any, any results from doing that? And I know people that have not gotten results from calls.
Okay.
And I don't understand the role of the police at all in this either, you know? This is an ordinance, isn't this law that should be enforced?
It should be, and if it's, you know, under the authority, and our ordinance, our 1986 ordinance, said that it was under the authority of the animal control authority, which was designated as Franklin County. I asked Mr. Morongo, I said, now with this additional money, will you all be patrolling in the both, both cities, just to have general patrol? And he said, no, it will be the same level of service, we will respond to calls only. Mr. Morongo said this, and he said, because they've had to beef up their patrols on the beaches, they've had to hire more, they're hiring two part-time to patrol the beaches because they've had major complaints on the beaches from the residents and tourists there, and that they would have to, they're hiring two part-timers, and they would need to fund those two part-timers to provide coverage in the two cities. But it was not increasing the standard or level of service, but just to continue with the same level of service. We wonder as well, do, what about the counties, the unincorporated area, will they continue with the same level of service? You know, they're paying the same rate of taxes that the rest of us pay. That's a question that you all could take to Mr. Morongo. And I have a list that I'll give you. Okay?
Well, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me to have an ordinance, which I know you've done a lot of work on, I've done some work on, Dan has had done some work on. I mean, it's a long ordinance, but there's no explanation of enforcement, of how it's going to be enforced.
Well, this is what we need to get worked out with the county, because the county is charged with this to enforce the, this animal control ordinance, is that correct, Mr. Hartman?
Actually, the memorandum of agreement of any sort that we enter into would basically what would give them the authority to enforce the city ordinance. Otherwise, they would be operating under the county ordinance, county-wide. So it is a little, I mean, I understand why, and it's certainly logical, that they want a memorandum of understanding to be operating basically on our, the city's behalf, enforcing the city's ordinance in the city of Carabel. So memorandum of understanding, I think, is perfectly logical, and then law enforcement folks can talk about how, what their involvement is in it, as far as what makes sense from their perspective, and the money is the tough question for the commissions.
The chief had something.
It just seemed like to me that people, the citizens of the city of Carabel and Appalachia would get the same service as the people that live in the county if they paid the same amount of taxes. Now, with the...
And to respond to that, this is just my understanding now, I was sitting in the cut of the meeting. We would still continue to get the same service that the county does, but it sounds to me like it's complaint-driven and it's not on a daily patrol.
But they won't, they're seven thousand dollars.
And using, Mr. Magnum used, that they see five dogs that's a stray, unless there's a complaint, they don't actually take any action. You see what I'm saying? That everything's going to be complaint-driven, so if you get a complaint...
But they don't, law enforcement respond to every call of them.
You know, Gary, that doesn't make any sense to me either, you know? I mean, I would think that it makes more sense to call an animal control officer first to assess the situation, and then contact law enforcement if needed, you know?
If the call's not serious in nature, and they don't need law enforcement, they just want to go set a trap or something simple like that, they don't need us, why tie us up now?
Mayor, did you, and good question, did you understand that what they were saying there, and it is not clear to them, but what I understood some of them to say, or some of the conversation to be, is if there was human involvement, then a police officer would respond. If you had an example like you just gave, chief, that if there was a complaint about a stray dog, cat, or animal, if you will, and it needed to be trapped and picked up or carried over, then there was no human involvement, then an officer wouldn't go. But if there was human involvement, for example, an argument between two or whatever, then an officer wouldn't. Now, that's part of the discussion. Now, whether they're sticking with that, I'm not clear, but that was part of the discussion.
And there's times that we do animal control stuff.
Right.
Before we moved over here, and Courtney knows, and I think some of the other ones y'all know, I go over to this lady's house, I catch 13 chickens myself that I'm in control with.
That was in my year.
I took money out of my budget and bought materials to build a trap with that cat just laid, that was an animal control complaint, not a police department. I had to get up out of bed at night getting calls when people's horses would get out. I carry my own truck, my own trailer, I've caught these horses. I've even took some of them for animal control because they didn't have nowhere to put them.
Yes, he's housed the horses.
I've had to do that for them. Now, it seems like if they don't want to step up to the plate, maybe they ought to pay up a little, if they were expecting us to do more.
Because now they're asking basically for 16, 17 from the city of Carabel, and 20, 21 from Appalachia Cola, you know, it's coming near to double. So it's, yes, sir.
Just two observations. Mr. Magnum makes a good point. I mean, when you call 911, they're going to either dispatch police out there, or if they need an ambulance, they'll dispatch an ambulance, so that officer, whoever the control person is, should be able to figure out whether or not a police officer needs to go out there and then call the police. And the other one was more on the advantage of Carabel. If Appalachia pays more than Carabel does now, I think that the fee for the year should be adjusted because Carabel's a smaller city. I mean, why are we both paying seven more when they're a larger city and they pay more to begin with, we're smaller, you know, adjust that maybe seven and six, or seven and five, you know?
I don't know if they're larger, but they have private property.
Right, but they pay more in now, you know?
They have a larger population.
That was just a dig for Carabel.
And their property taxes are...
Yeah, that's a property tax.
Per capita.
So, yes. Okay.
One thing to keep in mind, Mayor, for if I can just make a comment, is we have to keep in mind, in whatever we do here, and I still think we need to be better informed, and we need to have answers with some of these questions I do, is we have to keep in mind that, I can't speak for the city of Appalachia Cola, Carabel doesn't have the budget to have a setup for animal control, a total full-time setup for animal control. We don't have that kind of money, there's no way. So we've got to keep that in the back of our minds as well, too. Thank you.
And so that puts us on the spot.
It does.
I will say to have to pay the $7,000 a year. Yes, sir, Mr. Magnum.
Well, in response to your comments, Tony, would it, if people were getting citations for animal control violations, wouldn't that act as a deterrent to, and maybe get everything under a little better control than it is now?
My answer to that question would be, if you want a yes or no, it'd be a yes, because anytime you have a punishment behind any kind of policy or procedure or law, anytime you have a punishment behind it, that's a deterrent.
So is that, is that happening now?
Well, now it's not happening, well, it may, it may be, it's up to the animal control. They manage our animal control in the city, and that's why we agreed at the workshop to incorporate the county's fees, their fees for violations, into our ordinance so that they could collect the fees that they need to collect to help support their animal control department over there. And that's what is proposed in the ordinance that we'll review here shortly. So I suppose it would be best to, you know, for administrative staff and the chiefs to try to schedule a meeting with Mr. Morongo. I guess I would suggest in Appalachia Cola, since they're in Appalachia Cola and Mr. Morongo is too, maybe that he would agree to a meeting easier than having to come over here. And just to see if you all can schedule a meeting and take some questions, and I've got certainly a few. And anybody, y'all give Courtney your questions regarding this particular item, the fees and the level of service, and how it's going to be managed with the law enforcement departments answering these calls first, do they answer them first? To me, and Chief Barnes has told me and Chief Hunnings, that anytime there's a human involvement, that they respond, you know, and especially if there's a bite, they're always, they're always there, and sometimes if it's a dog-dog bite, they're there sometimes. But just to pick up an animal at large, or trap an animal. Now, first, as we have the FWC, they respond to bear calls quite often, and they'll set a trap, and they're, we called them in our own yard where we have a bear problem once, and we didn't have to have the police department come out, and that's a similar animal control issue there. I don't even think the police department knew that happened, so. Does that seem all right? We just move forward with that, this portion of the discussion, and go ahead and move forward with reviewing our ordinance, and if these gentlemen from Appalachia want to listen in, you're more than welcome, or we'll let you all go and do what you need to do, whatever you feel like, unless you have any comments.
We'll just see when we have the meeting with Michael walking in.
Okay.
We appreciate the invitation, thank you.
Okay, we appreciate you coming over.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Nally.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very much, and it's a beautiful drive out there.
I'd love it, too, thank you. By the way, do you have any idea what the total calls for the county were? You had 19 for Carabel, 29 for Appalachia, I was just interested if you had a total call volume?
Can you give them a copy of that, of what you had there that you read out about the fees?
He's got it.
Okay, he has that, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all so much for coming, it's a pleasure.
Yeah, why don't you tell about that? You want me to? Can I just say one more?
Yes, sir.
And I don't mean to, I don't think I've got to say beat a dead horse in this world, but, you know, I don't want to see people getting high fines and being harassed, you know, having to give up their animals. I just want people to be responsible for their animals, you know? I mean, they're our neighbors, they're our friends, you know? I mean, I don't want a lot of punitive action, but I just think, in my opinion, the city's at a point that we need to, maybe spread some awareness and try to get people to be responsible, so.
Yes, it's not just, you know, against the humans, animals and humans, the issue, but, and in this proposed ordinance, it talks about abandoned animals, you know, and how animals should be tethered and that type thing, and it's for the care of the animal as well. And sometimes it can be a sad situation, you know, you drive by and see something and wish it could be managed in a better way.
I have another friend that walks his dog, two dogs every morning, and he's confronted at a particular place with five stray dogs, almost every day, and it causes a fine. And another person I know has called repeatedly about a barking dog near their house, and that problem doesn't get resolved. But yet, in this ordinance, it talks about this.
Right, and then our original ordinance from 86, it talked about that, nuisance.
There's solutions to these problems. One of the solutions, I think, is just...
Yes, sir, Mr. Tom.
Sometimes it seems when we're discussing this that we have an ordinance that might not be enforced, and if that's the case, it makes you wonder why we're going to have an ordinance. I think what you were talking about, our cost, is we're contributing $9,000 to the budget now, we had seven. What's that work out per call? $800 a call or something like that? Have you got 20 calls and you're spending $16,000? Isn't that around $800 a call or something?
Well, I think that's about, what are we spending now? $9,000, you've got the numbers.
I came back.
Oh, well, just...
It was right at $10,000, it was $9,900.
And then they want seven on top of that, so if you get 20 calls a year, that's probably in the ballpark of $800 a call.
And so, right now, we're paying $500, but if we increase it to seven, that's another $7,000.
That's what I'm saying, next year, as I understand it.
And basically, one call a month.
Or even, it's just a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
For not solving the problem. And I mentioned it before, I think the city needs to really look at getting an independent contractor, to hire on, you know, this independent contractor, maybe they come through town at 6 o'clock or morning once a week. Sometimes I'm up in the morning early, if we want up to Quincy or something for farm share, and I go down Three Rivers Road, and I'll see five dogs frequently on that road packed up together, not to mention the ones that you see walking or riding your bike, et cetera. And we're just going to have to have somebody that could come through and periodically and pick the dogs up. And when that happens, when people pay the citation... And when that happens, when people pay the citation, to get their dogs back, I'm hoping that that's going to start. And, and before we implement that, I think we should really inform the city that there's going to be a start date, and then on a, on a semi-regular basis, animals at, at large are going to be picked up. And make sure everybody knows about it.
Now, we could, I know we're being recorded, but we could, uh, an independent contractor is a thought, is, you know, an idea.
It is.
And then what we would do is send a note to the county and ask them to help pay for our independent contractor, that they pay back that nine thousand dollars a year to someone.
Well, that was what I was going to ask, and we would hold that, no, we can't really withhold that, have a moral tax.
Well, you also have to consider if our independent contractor picks up five dollars, what are they going to do with it?
Well, that would, that person would have to have their own kennels that they, you know.
Or take, why couldn't they take them to the county facility?
Well, they might.
They could, I mean, I understand now that you can go, uh, to the county facility and drop off an animal, if I, if I'm incorrect.
I don't know about that. Uh, you can do that at the Humane Society, which is a separate nonprofit organization. But the shelter, the county animal shelter, I, I don't know how, if you can drop off there or not myself, I don't know that. So, um, we have a, uh, proposed ordinance here.
Brett, and that kind of, just one last thing.
Yes, sir.
You were talking about bears.
Yes.
And that, I, I've seen a truck around here and, and, uh, in, in town, and it's got something painted on the side of it, like it's a license to pick up alligators. You know, if you, if you have a problem with an alligator here and you're, I don't think the sheriff's department comes and gets it, I'm not even sure if an FWC officer comes. I think they'd get somebody who I would think is an independent contractor comes and does that for them.
And you'd see.
He is contracted through the FWC.
Right. But I'm still saying, it's not an FWC employee, full-time, you know.
Right, he's an independent contractor.
Compensation, health, the person gets paid to do that, to do that particular thing.
And I think what he does, he relocates the alligators, I believe.
And he has to go through the FWC to do it. He can't just go on his own and do it.
No, I know that, but I'm.
It has to be approved by an FWC law enforcement and a biologist to do it.
Hi, I'm just.
He is, he is paid by state funds, some of them are state employees, some of them are OPS employees, and some of them are independent contractors.
Yeah, I was just using as an example.
Yeah, Mr. Don Davis is who you see.
Yeah.
And that's, um, who I thought about right away when you said independent contractor. He might be one that's interested in something like that for animal, uh, regular domesticated animals, I don't know. Um, but, uh, we do know the FWC, I know the Forest Service, uh, hires independent contractors to go pick up bear carcasses, but that's all, has to all be documented and, you know, when that happens, that type of thing. So, uh, we'll, we'll look at this, if y'all don't mind, and, and I would, um, yes, sir?
Hi, uh, my name's Christopher Miley. Um, first time I've talked here. But I recently heard, like you were talking about with the bears on the radio, that they were looking for, I guess, maybe independent contractors with cages and stuff to go out and pick up bears. And it also stated that, you know, um, I guess on a situation, they would be paid more for apprehending a bear that was maybe in a neighborhood versus, you know, off in the woods or something like that. But why can't they do something like that with the stray dogs? In other words, if you had someone who was out, and I mean, I realize someone could abuse that by just picking up dogs in someone's yard, but if you're out driving around and you happen to see a stray dog and bring it in, then you're paid a bounty for that. That way, you wouldn't have to have someone full-time, there would, there would be a call center, you know, either through FWC or whatever, and that person could go out and on his own time, look for that dog and then be rewarded for bringing the dog in.
Well, it's, it's possible, it, it would have to be managed as an, an independent contractor type of a, a situation, I think. Is that, is that right, Mr. Hartman? Is that something that could be done?
We, we could, um, just like we, we've talked about, um, hiring contract police officers, just like we've hired contracts, um, building officials. So, we can, we, we could do that, getting money from the, it would be interesting, at least as part of the discussion with the county, to flip it around, understanding that they're, how, how it is, you know, if they'd be willing to, then we'd know what budget we had to work with, so you could at least explore it, because it would, it's worth exploring, especially given that number of calls. Uh, that's interesting information, if, um, you know, say you have twenty-five.
Okay. All right, uh, yes, sir?
Well, I was just going to say that I think we should go ahead and negotiate with the county or something about them receiving animals, that if we get an independent contractor, it's just like, uh, Carabel doesn't have a jail, as far as I know. You know, if an arrest is made by a Carabel officer, they'll be taking them to the county? And that would be part of their responsibility would be to, to house them.
And it's kind of the same way, with the tax money that the people in Carabel pays, three hundred and something thousand dollars of that tax money goes to the sheriff's office and his buddy.
All right, well, well, we need to, uh, we, our, uh, the administrator and city manager and the two chiefs of both cities are going to try to desperately schedule a meeting with the county coordinator and possibly the, uh, county supervisor over animal control and see if we can get some of our questions answered. And, uh, so that we can finish our ordinance, because we've got blanks in our ordinance that need to be answered from the county, and, uh, so that we'll have a better understanding of exactly what they're expecting from us and what we can expect from them. So, uh, but we need to move forward now and, and take a review of this proposed ordinance. If there's any, um, revisions or anything that you all suggest briefly, I, I, I'm going to, uh, go along with Commissioner Miller's suggestion, uh, and say that we, and we'll have a motion for it, because this is a, that we don't, uh, vote on this today, uh, put it off possi- possibly to the December meeting, or unless you all think after we look at it, maybe we need another special meeting, I don't know. Uh, but not vote on it until we can certainly get some questions answered and get, uh, all of our commissioners here on board to, uh, because I, uh, can be controversial and I've requested for all the commissioners to sign this one. So, I want them all to, to, to be here to vote on it as well. But, uh, the title is pretty much the same as our core title from the ordinance of nineteen eighty-six, but as we discussed in our, um, workshop and throughout the entire ordinance, cats and dogs were changed to animals or all animals. Um, uh, there, you can see where the strike-throughs are, that is what, uh, has been taken out, and then the underline is what's been added and, uh, abandoned. And this is, this is, you know, for the animals' protection as well as the human protection. Uh, the definition abandoned. Uh, and I've had a citizen ask me about Dan using the word forsake. Abandoned means to forsake an animal entirely or to neglect or refuse to provide or perform the legal obligations for care and support of an animal by its owner. I've had a citizen tell me that they really didn't care for the word forsake. Um, but we like to add another word like, um, uh, leave an animal or desert an animal. Now, the, uh, this, uh, uh, term abandoned came from the Franklin County ordinance, and there's some, uh, most all these items are, uh, from the Franklin County ordinance. And Franklin County ordinance is a somewhat of a copy of the Bay County Animal Ordinance, because if you look closely at the Franklin County ordinance, you'll see the words Bay County, where they had typos and didn't take out Bay County and put Franklin. So.
I, um, number one, I don't think that it will make, I think literally the rest of it, meaning neglect or refuse to perform or illegal obligations, I mean, abandoned, uh, the, the definition is fine as is, we can, we can take the word forsake out and reword it, and that's fine, too. I don't think it'll affect the application or interpretation of the ordinance. But I go back to what I mentioned at the last meeting, the closer this is to the Franklin County ordinance, the better. It's made it easy to apply.
Okay. And, uh, animal, then, uh, what, what's been added to it is, uh, not, not just dog, cat, or any other domestic animal, it's any domestic animal, including any dog or cat or any captive wild animal, any poultry, any feral animal, any exotic animal, any livestock. And then down further, um, domestic animal is, is, uh, defined. Animal control authority, that was in our original, animal control officer was not in our original, but it's in, that is exactly how it appears in the Franklin County ordinance. Uh, animal establishment is in the original ordinance, animal shelter, um, is in the original ordinance. But I had a question to Dan there about held by the authority of this ordinance, and does that mean that the, that Carabel has the animal shelter, or should we just leave that held out, held by the authority of this ordinance out? And you, you made a comment there, but I just want you to kind of.
Sure, because I looked more at the beginning of the sentence, which says a facility designated or recognized by the city, Carabel City Commission, which we could recognize the Humane Society, we recognize the shelter, county shelter, that's fine.
Okay.
And then I'm, I'm, I hear what you're saying, say, any animals held by the authority of this ordinance, you have no problem. I mean, once we designate it, that's where they go. It doesn't, it doesn't put us on any, it doesn't put a obligation on us, so.
Even if we were to really go off the, the deep end and hire a contractor?
If we hired somebody, we would still designate, I mean, the county wouldn't necessarily like, but I mean, we do pay taxes.
Yes.
We would just designate the county shelter wherever we.
Could do that.
We would, we, our, um, independent contractor would drop the animals off there.
Yeah, could do that. Um, at large, um, this is pretty much any of what is in the, um, we added to any animal instead of just dog or cat, it's any animal. Um, and not under, now, this, this discussion I've heard, uh, and I, I asked Mr. Magnum what he thought about it as well, uh, direct physical restraint control. Um, the commissioners, county commissioners, I've heard them talk about this, uh, regarding , uh, animals on the beaches. Uh, they let, they bring their animals on a leash, but then they let the animal go. And in part of the county ordinance, I read that it talks about something that's under control. Uh, and a lot of people say, well, my animal's under verbal control. And the county commissioner said verbal control isn't sufficient if they want the animal to be under direct physical control.
That's correct.
And, um, sitting on the TDC, you know, we go back and forth about it, and we want to show pictures of, uh, you know, animals on the leash with a human, uh, you know, restrained, human restraint. So, the animal should, uh, be, uh, you know, under the direct physical control of the owner and not just under verbal control, that kind of thing. And does that seem fair to everyone?
That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, we didn't have citation, and the, uh, definition for citation is in, uh, the county ordinance. Uh, rabies vaccination was in our ordinance, but not current. And so I just used, I put in the county current, uh, rabies vaccination and use their, their definition. Uh, confined was in our ordinance, dangerous animal has been added in, and that's any animal, including any dog, and this is from the county ordinance. Um, and if, if you all have read this, I won't read every, you know, every item, we'll be here a long time if I do that. Um, and then there's the definition of direct physical restraint control. Immediate, continuous physical control of any animal, including any dog, at all times, such as by means of a leash, cord, or chain, or such, uh, or such strength to humanely restrain the dog or animal, and is controlled by a person capable of restraining the dog or animal, or humane, safe, and secure restraint within a vehicle. Direct physical strength, restraint control shall not be required of dogs actually participating in a legal, in a legal sport such as dog hunting, or in an authorized area like a, a pet, um, a dog park, um, or to government police dogs. So, does, you know, if y'all have anything you want to add, please do. Domestic animal, any active wine or bovine, animal, goat, sheep, swine, domestic cat, dog, poultry, ostrich, emu, uh, RHEA, what is that? I don't know, I didn't look, look it up, but, yes, sir?
Uh, up and down our street, we have a lot of people drive by with their dogs sticking out of the window. And when I'm walking my dog, they usually talk to each other, in dog talk, of course. And, uh, I just wonder if, if a dog jumped out of a window. They seem to be pretty well on, I've never seen one do that, but I just raise the question of, uh, if that, he's not under control if he can jump out of the window, or out of the back of the truck.
Mm-hmm.
That's very popular, just bringing pet dog around in the back of the truck.
Well, what, what do you think? I mean, I don't know how we can reach into someone's vehicles, and that would be like reaching into their, inside their house, you know?
I mean, the thing is, and I, and maybe goes to, to what Tom talked about, Mr. Magnum, but, um, you know, we've all had, if you own dogs, occasionally they'll get out, they'll open the front door and they'll rush out, or something like that. Obviously, you go after and you get them back under control and them back up and everything else. But that's sort of what Commissioner Allen's talking about. I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know if, if, um, I mean, is the question, let's say a police officer observes that, or the animal control officer is right there, are they going to get fined? Or, it's obviously a violation, I mean, technical violation, right? But I don't, I mean, I think it's covered, I think we're fine. I mean, if a dog jumped out of the window and started running around town, now it's a dog that's not under restraint and animal control, or the police can get them. Obviously, you hope the person in the car would realize the dog jumped out and they stopped, and then within five to twenty minutes, we'd have their dog back, back in the car and down the road, and the window a little tighter.
Well, it would be just like if you had a, uh, your window open in your house and your dog is, the dog is hanging out the window. It could certainly jump out.
And that happened one time at our house. Our little Jack Russell, we were working on the, had the window open and Gisanna had just had a knee surgery and was on a walker. And her cat walked in our yard and Petey jumped through the window, chased the cat up the tree, and she was shaking her walker at him, and he was trying to bite the rocker. And she wasn't a happy lady, I guarantee you that. But, uh, we finally, you know, and all I could do is tell Petey, let's go for a ride, and he'd go down the truck. So, we, we were going, that's all the way to control. But those, those things can be scary, and she, you know, she, she had, uh, if, she had panicked and fell or hurt, then we, it would have been a big mess. So, those things can happen.
I agree with what Dan's saying and trying to be logical and reasonable. Once that animal left your property and went to Ms. Parmesan's, Parmesan's property, then it was no longer under your control.
That's right.
However, there's many things in this ordinance, and many scenarios we come up with where people have their animals, whatever they may be, in a fenced yard. They're not necessarily tethered, but they're in a fenced yard. They can go out the gate, jump the fence, or climb the fence, whatever. But once they leave you, as long as they own your property, I look on that, look at it as under your control.
And that, that's how the ordinance looks at it.
And that could include a pickup truck or a car.
Yes, yes.
RV or motorcycle or bicycle. I've seen people riding with their dogs in a basket on a bicycle. So, uh, but anyway, we have definition of exotic animal, which would be, of course, the pythons that we all hear about, and, you know, lions and tigers and leopards and elephants and all of those, monkeys and snakes and water buffalo and all of those exotic animals.
And elephant is all in a row.
Yeah, feral animal, and we have had monkeys at large.
Yeah.
Okay. And feral animal, is, is any, you know, wild dog or cat, whether it was born in the wild or has reverted to the wild state, uh, to the abandonment or lack of domestication. Fighting, any fighting between roosters, birds, dogs, bears, or other animals. Humane manner, that was in our original. Empoundment, um, and that's taking up and confining of an animal by the Department of Animal Control in a matter, matter, manner consistent with professional recognized standards of humane treatment. Kennel was in our, um, original. Livestock, uh, gives the definition of livestock. Licenses author, licensing author, can't say it, authority, uh, was in our original. Neutered was in the original, but spade, uh, has been added, so, you know, we just cover all the bases there. Nuisance was in the original, and, uh, that is an animal, and that would be, uh, including any domestic animal, being a dog, cat, or any captive wild animal, any poultry, any feral animal, any exotic animal, any livestock. animal, any exotic animal, any livestock. And so that's, you know, if they soil, defile, dedicate on private property, other than the owners, if they're on public blocks, recreation areas, and so the waste needs to be immediately removed by the owner if they're in public areas, and if the animal causes a disturbance by excessive barking, or noise making, or chases vehicles, or chases, or molests, attacks, or interferes with persons, other, or other domestic animals on public property, that is a nuisance. And then the owner is a person, and the county ordinance said, or cooperation, corporation?
Cooperation.
Yeah. Having the right or property or custody of an animal. Person, that's any individual or corporation. Potential rabies carriers, and then it names all the animals, that could be raccoons, fox, bats, bobcats, and skunks. Proper enclosure of a dangerous dog has been added. And there, it talks about the, it needs to be, the dog needs to be securely confined indoors, or in a securely enclosed locked pen, locked pen, or structure suitable to prevent the entry of young children, and designed to prevent the animal from escaping. And it goes into detail there. Public nuisance, and public is spelled wrong, that was a typo there, that needs to be repaired. And that's any animal, or domestic animal, being any dog, cat, any captive wild animal, any poultry, and any feral, any exotic animal, and any livestock, which damages property, chases a person, or a vehicle, or molestes passersby, passersby, or any animal which soils and defiles. So, basically, a public nuisance is the same thing as a nuisance. Courtney brought up a good one about the ducks in the park, but I've got that listed somewhere, and I'll bring that up shortly. Restraint, and that was in our original, but we marked out dog and cat, instead an animal, and then they need to be secured or led under the direct physical restraint control of a reasonable, responsible person. Severe injury has been added in. Shelter has been added in, and it defines, and this is for the humane treatment of an animal, you know, at least how big should the shelter be if they're going to keep an animal in a, in a shelter? And it goes into several descriptions there, how to keep an animal. Even about how, how wide the slats in the floor should be of the shelter. Tethering, it talks about how long the rope should be for the, if you're going to tether an animal. Vicious was in our original ordinance. Rabies vaccination was in our original ordinance, but the word current has been added. Owner responsibility was in the original ordinance, but it's not the Florida Game and Freshwater Fish, it's the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation. And that will be a proper enclosure of a dangerous dog, which shall be muzzled or caged whenever off the property has been added. No animal shall be allowed to cause a public nuisance. The owner of every animal, including, and it names all the animals again, shall be held responsible for the behavior of such animal under the provisions of this ordinance. And then all animal owners will provide adequate food, water, shelter, medical care if needed, and sanitary, and sanitary environment. We hear failure to comply with the provisions of this section shall subject the owner to a, to minimal, minimal civil penalties for the violations of this, not otherwise, listed in subsection F as follows. So, we had, we had fines in our original ordinance, $10 to $100, and we had discussed that those fines weren't sufficient, that we needed to up that a little bit, and then we, we discussed just adding the fee chart, fine chart, that they use in the Franklin County ordinance, so that's what you see there. Then we refer back to that section four, letter F, or three, it's, I believe it's four F. We refer back to that. I think some of these sections may need to be, we need to check on these sections, they may not be numbered quite right, but we'll, we'll review that again. Running at large is prohibited, and it gives all the descriptions of what is an exception to run at large, but, you know, whether, all the, all the supposed incidences of what is running at large, what is a public nuisance, you know, and it's prohibited, and all of, it gives a complete list there of what a public nuisance is, from an animal or domesticated animal. And that, these, all these underlines are from the Franklin County ordinance. Humane care required, and all of this is from the Franklin County ordinance. You know, if you want me to read it out, I will, but it's, it's a good bit of reading, and it would be fairly lengthy. Abandonment, abandonment of animals is prohibited, and that describes what is abandonment of animals, all those sections. Dangerous dogs are prohibited. And then Florida statute is referred to in the animal control, Franklin County Animal Control Ordinance, and if you look at Florida statute, which I did provide a reference, it's, it's quite lengthy, and it will give a good description of a dangerous dog. And is that sufficient to use in this ordinance, Dan, just a reference to the Florida statute?
Yes.
Okey dokey.
Self-improvement, so that's good.
Biting, or biting of animals, and that refers to a Florida statute as well. And then it talks about the fines, and it's referring to the chart there, and you'll see that effect up here, and abandonment, if there's a fine, and it refers to the chart. Empoundment, we had impoundment in the original, but the city of Carabel's been removed, and animal control is put there. You see blanks, because we had the fee of $5. Well, if Franklin County or any other animal control is going to do this for us, we don't know what their impoundment fee is, we don't know what their vaccination fee is. And neutering, we don't know what, we don't know what their neutering fee is, so we'll have to find that out. But we had impoundment in, in our original ordinance. Redemption, and there's some fees there, but we need to find out what those fees are, and that was in our original ordinance. Adoption was in our original ordinance, the word spade has been added. Right of entry, so there's two different paragraphs here. The first paragraph was in our original ordinance, but the second paragraph would be, and we'll have to, you know, maybe hold on this one and get, and get answer from Mr. Hartman. If the law enforcement officer is going to have to go to answer the call first, then it would be that the law enforcement, or I don't know if you would have both of these, the law enforcement officer or the animal control officer, shall have the right to enter upon any private or public property?
I first, I could see both.
So, I mean, I think we have the option of putting both, saying, animal control or law enforcement officer shall have the right to enter.
Because hopefully, that animal control officer's going to respond to a complaint when we don't need a law enforcement officer.
But, you know, what we deal with, for, you know, analogize to code enforcement again, is, we talked about a, a law enforcement officer can wear all these different hats. So, when he's, when he's doing, when Gary was rounding up chickens, he really is acting as an animal control officer, not a police officer, right? So, that's, I don't think we can go wrong there. It's more, not, we can't, I don't see, we can't go wrong. We could include law enforcement officer, or even leave it out, and just go animal control officer, because that's what law enforcement officers are doing, if they're responding to animal control calls, just like they are when they're doing code enforcement calls. They're literally wearing that hat.
Would you leave that word or in it?
No. I would actually just, I would literally, because they're the same, otherwise.
Yes.
So, I would just, you say, the animal, animal control, sorry, who asked that word? Animal control or law enforcement officer?
Yeah, that'd be good.
And just put one paragraph?
Yep, in one paragraph, right.
Now, we'll say here that I've had a citizen ask me about, should there be, well, I've got a citizen that wants the city to tag, the city to issue tags to all people coming in here, just like they get vote grant fees, and to get a tag for their animals, even if they have exotic animals. And we might charge a fee for it, or a minimum fee, $3, $5, but then the city would know all of the animals, and all of the owners, and the animal would wear this tag. And the, the same citizen would then say, if you have all of it, all of your animals identified, even your exotic animals that are kept in a house, then that would help protect the police department or fire department if they have to go inside a home or property on some other type of, a call, that they wouldn't get inside and get attacked by a pit bull, or a monkey, or something. I'm just bringing it up, it's been, it was a, you know, it's been brought to my attention.
It's a little complicated, and it affects a lot of people, and I think that's been a really hard thing to accomplish.
Well, tagging all the animals would be, that would be, that would be a big job, to try to get everyone in here and tag all of their animals.
Yeah, a cat has 10, 15 kittens, and you got to get them all tagged, and, you know, just.
But I'm, I'm bringing it up to you, for consideration.
There's another thing, so, our commissioner over there says that's just not in there.
Okay, yes, oh, we got hands raised.
I just wondered what tagging meant. You mean, like, get a little medallion or something that goes on their dog collar? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, or, or cat collar, or chicken collar, or whatever it may be. That every animal would be registered, registered with the city, and...
There would be some difficulty, I'd have to give that a lot of thought, because what you're thinking is strictly permanent residents, that doesn't include any tourists, that doesn't, transit travels, there's...
And I'm not necessarily, I wasn't thinking it, it was brought to my attention and asked that I would bring it to the, to the commission.
Yep, roadblocks.
And it's something to, to think about, anyway. But yes, if you've got visiting animals, then how do we, and, and we know, we understand, when officers and firemen have to go into these houses and businesses or whatever, they don't know what they're going to find when they get in there, do you?
No, you don't.
And some places, I know, in the big city, keep pit bulls inside to protect. Dangerous. Okay.
I had a friend in Chattanooga one time, that had a automobile with a fireplace, and he kept a very vicious dog in his building at night. And, you know, if he walked in, that dog would get, it's strange to that.
All right. Interference, this was in our original ordinance. No person shall interfere or hinder with, or molest any agent or animal control authority, law enforcement officer, in the performance of any duty here and provided. And then it's got a fine there. We had to fine no less than, of not less than $50, but it's up to 100, or, of not less than 50, or more than 500. Is that, okay? All right. And I'm asking the attorney, so. Citations or violations, this was in our original ordinance. Cruelty, fighting, and abandonment was in our original ordinance. Duty to report animal bites is in the original. All of these other items, remove, removal of dead animals, repeal of conflicting ordinances, servability, applicable, say that to somebody for me?
Applicability.
Applicability, and safety laws. And so, that's, that's that. Let me see if I have someone, I've been asked several questions by one, one person, what happens to the animal when they're confined, how long is it held, and then who pays for the euthanization? And that is outlined under the impoundment section, on how long they keep them, at the, at the five days, I believe it is, and who pays, and all of that, that's under the impoundment section 10. Okay, then, this print is so tiny, I can't read it. Okay, first on stray dogs, okay. Registered or tagged, okay, so I covered that one. And what I did, oh, see, your magnifying glasses, I actually added, added it on to this ordinance here, and printed out, it's tiny like that. Then Courtney will talk about ducks, which, you know, I thought was kind of a good, we've got poultry in here, which includes ducks. So, she's concerned about the ducks, our wild ducks that we have at Sands Park, which to me is legitimate as well. But I would think that under poultry, we're referring to any...
We have it somewhere here about wild, wild animals are not included.
Yes, wild animals or exotic animals are really...
There's a section, I mean, there is a definite, it's in the definition section or something.
Well, the ducks at Palmer.
They're wild.
Yeah, under the definition of animal, any domestic animal, this ordinance, referred to this ordinance, animal, any captive wild animal, any poultry, any feral, feral animal, exotic animal, any livestock. It's not, arguably, it's not within the term of animal.
Do we want to put captive poultry? Would we do that?
They're an animal. I don't want to get on my reptiles and everybody...
No, but poultry, yes.
Poultry's an animal, poultry's a mammal.
And that, you know, you have buzzards that are, that are poultry, or buzzard, what, uh...
They're wild.
They're not for consumption.
They're not captive.
They like to consume, but, we wouldn't want someone to, want us to capture, you know, they can be a nuisance.
In a nutshell, I'm licensed to transport wild animals over, and I took a buzzard over just the other day to, to the pound, to the rehab facility in...
What color? You took a buzzard in your car?
Yeah.
Okay.
I couldn't put him on time, or drag him behind, and I had to...
Wasn't in the passenger seat, was it? Seatbelt.
No, we had a...
Okay, why?
A crate.
Oh, but why did you take this? I mean, what was wrong?
He had a broken wing.
Oh, poor thing.
Yeah.
He didn't try to eat you on the way here?
No.
They always get things.
As bad as they look, and as, what we relate them to, is one of the different, than an eagle or a hawk?
Yeah.
Just a bird.
Yeah.
Just a bird.
They like country music on the radio.
Now, yesterday.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chris.
When you, when you were talking about fines for whatever, whether it's noise or off of a leash, is there anything that would, after so many, you know, that's four or five times, that you would remove the animal from the person, much like they always do with child protective services? A lot of people take veteran air of their animals than they do their kid. I hate to say that, but, but, you know, if, if your child was walking down the street every day by himself, and he's two, child protective services eventually going to come and take the child from you. So, if an animal, you know, an owner continually lets his dog run wild, you know, pays $10, $20, $50, $100, at what point do you just remove the dog from the person because he's not responsible enough to have the animal? Or a cat, or...
That would be, just like it would be under, I'll ask the chief, like, a child, that goes to the court, to court. When, if the child's going to be removed from a family, that has to go before...
Sometimes ECF contacts their supervisor and elder parent and that immediately, depending on...
on the target family.
Oh, well, yeah. But they've got a lot of these violations here. They go to mandatory court appearance. And it could be that it's, you know, they're so... I don't know. Did you read anything like that in there, Dan, about how many?
I think there's some repeat violation stuff, but I agree, it ultimately is going to go, become kind of a custom order from the judge. We can get to a maximum fine amount and on repeat violations.
We can look at that. We're not going to vote on this.
Right.
But I would also direct you all to, you, Cindy and Chris especially, to look at the Franklin County government website on their dropdown menu on the side. They've got county ordinances, and if you click on that, their animal control ordinance PDF will come up. And look at that because you're under that jurisdiction where you live in Franklin County. And they would, it's a little bit more detailed than this one, this ordinance. So I've written that down and we'll research that for our next go around on this one, repeat violations. I'll talk to the chief and see. And that's something that you could talk to the county. How do they, how do they handle repeat violations? Do they handle repeat violations? Okay. All right. So is there anything else now that someone wants to discuss? Any suggestions here from...
Sure. If you, I think we're ready for that point.
All right. You don't have anything, any other comments otherwise? Okay. Well, then...
Commissioner Allen?
I don't.
Okay. What I'll do is ask for a table, an action until we can...
I move that we table the action.
Okay. All right.
Till the next meeting or special meeting.
What, well, what do y'all think? We've got a motion here, but...
I would like for him, I'll second his motion, but I would include in that motion for us to have a, to table it as suggested or as motion by Commissioner Allen for a future date and time to be determined, once this four-person committee, if you will, I guess.
Oh, oh, yes.
To figure out the answers.
Okay.
I'll be glad to add all that.
Okay. So table contingent upon a scheduled special meeting date.
Be determined, yep. I think we, I don't think we're in a push here to move fast. I think we can move along at a decent pace.
Snuggles pace.
At a decent pace and make sure we cover all our bases. But I'll second your motion.
So that's to table this discussion, contingent upon a scheduled special meeting, once you all have done your thing. And that's Commissioner Allen and second by Commissioner Melander. And is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And that motion, right. And that motion carries unanimously. And we want to make sure all commissioners have a copy and that they can review for the next... And so maybe you all will be able to meet by our December meeting and we can report back and we can schedule ourselves another special meeting.
Sometime in March.
In March? Oh.
Well, that'd be after hunting season. That'd be fine.
Maybe before the December meeting and that will get anything accomplished this week, so it may be... Yeah. Okay. So we have that motion to adjourn by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Melander. I can hear him whispering it over here. And is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.